Okay, oh, still no protester. All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. We will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one tribe, one law, liberty, and justice for all.
We're getting better at that.
We are getting better. Okay. Uh, let's see, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, board reports. Mary, we start with you. You're at the top of my screen.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Um, I received some poems from the, from Greenview Nose Elementary School, and the students were writing poems about the COVID-19, and I'll just read one of them. It's called "The Journey of 2020" by Lily J., and it goes, "The coronavirus started in 2020. The stimulus checks poured us lots, lots of money. People were quarantined with nothing to do, which resulted in people feeling blue. There was a toilet paper shortage because people began to hoard it. The world had become a mess when people began to protest. Seeing no friends was a bust, but staying home was a must. The world was now filled with doubt, and people had started to shout. Some jobs were taken away, nothing to do and nowhere to play. The vaccines started to roll in, which means recovery will begin." So that was one of the wonderful poems. And I also want to thank Dr. Marr for the sound bites, podcast episode number two, and the subject was food, fitness, and fun, and his guests were Ms. Doran, Mr. Watson, and Mr. Burrows. And Ms. Doran said that she has already served, or her food and nutrition services have served over 1 million meals. She said, "No kid goes hungry," and all the meals are free for anyone 18 and under, and a press release has been issued about the food distribution. And Mr. Burrows has PPEs for musical instruments. PPEs for musical instruments. It is such a thing. And he said there's something special about SMCPM. He said it is the gem of the East Coast. And Mr. Watson talked about the future number of spectators for sporting events, and he talked about safety for spectators and players. Also, some other quotes that are memorable, quote, state, "SMCPS is successful due to the strong collaboration between schools, offices, and programs." Another quote, "Art, athletics, and extracurricular are an antidote for COVID. Parents are asked to encourage their children to participate because it helps with students' social, emotional, and healthy well-being." Also, "Congratulations" is due to the signal, and they had, um, it provides updates and information for all the staff in SMCPS. That was a brilliant and exquisite art display, and it made you feel as though you were in an international renowned museum. You could click on the artwork and learn about the artist and the artwork. And I want to thank Mr. Burrows, our art educators, him Lockhart facilitating the display. It was wonderful, and for the people who haven't seen it, it is worth seeing it. It is awe-inspiring. So that's my report, and thank you very much, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Davis?
I have no reports at this time.
Okay. Nagina?
All right, so, uh, much of what I've done over the past few weeks has been centered around welcoming the class of 2025 to high school. Um, and last week I helped record the Rising Freshman Information Soundbites Podcast, where I gave the student perspective on what entering high school is really like, and shared some of my own stories from freshman year. Um, I also helped film a video specifically for the rising freshmen who will be attending Leonardtown High School to make sure they have a little bit of the lay of the land. Uh, so there is going to be a lot of tips and lots of information that will be made available to the class of 2025 in the next few weeks from SMCPS, the Be Your Best You team, and from the individual high schools.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Um, I attended virtually a meeting of the MAB Legislative Committee. Um, we are, we hit crossover, um, this week, and, uh, so, um, things are clicking along. Um, it will be interesting to see what comes out of all of this. There is a bill, um, that is going through that will make adjustments to, um, the, um, Kerwin Commission, um, specifically to adjust dates that had been anticipated to start, um, this, uh, this past year. Uh, so they're, they're moving everything by a year, but by and large, um, everything is, is in place, so, um, we will see what happens.
Okay, my report will be brief. Let's see, SATs were administered today in all three of the high schools. So thank you very much to all of the, um, teachers and instructors who signed up to proctor that exam because, um, with the limitation, I think there were only six students per room that were allowed, so, um, they, I had, I'm sure there were students spread out, you know, across the school. Um, also thank you to all of the parents of the virtual high schools stu-, or I'm sorry, the in-person high school students from, in Group A, because it was a virtual day for everyone today at all three of the high schools to accommodate the, the junior class and any seniors who did not, were not able to take advantage of the SAT last spring and still needed that test score. Um, let's see, sports are, fall sports ironically in spring are in full swing. So, um, you know, congratulations to all of the teams. Um, I've been at, at the volleyball games, and I have to say that the, um, amount of consciousness among the students, the players, the athletes, the coaches, everyone about making sure that the protocols are followed, um, is, has been excellent. Um, granted, our contests right now have only been in, within St. Mary's County. We've not traveled, nor have had Calvert teams come over here yet, um, but at least everyone has clearly gotten the word as to what, you know, what the standards are. So, great job for everyone getting the word out, and to all of our student athletes who are making sure that they're adhering to that as well.
And to the parents who are, um, really, um, being very understanding of the limitations under which we find ourselves.
So, all right, that's it. Scott, you're on.
Wonderful, and that really is the, it's been disappointing that, um, Calvert has had a couple of outbreaks, and so they've had a, they've had to wave off, um, games in the county. Um, but we've, you know, we've been, again, Mike Watson, who was on Food, Fitness, and Fun, and all the athletic directors as well, are really just doing an incredible job of making sure that they are in real time, being able to move things and, and communicate across schools, across schools, within the system, and then even into other counties as well. It's, um, again, it's testament to everybody doing everything they can to, to provide opportunities for our kids. So, let's take a look at a PowerPoint. Superintendent update, March 24th, March 24th.
Kill the screen. Kill the people.
Oh, sorry.
Please.
There you go.
Okay.
Um, we are, uh, in Phase 3. We have been in 3 all of March. That means that we've had, um, every kid for, every child from head start all the way up to 12th grade in, who wanted to be in at least two days a week in hybrid. Uh, over 13,000 students have been attending classes throughout, uh, throughout the month of March. Uh, over 23, 2,300 employees have been making sure that that able, is able to happen each day. Uh, if you have been, if you haven't been following our Twitter feed, please follow our Twitter feed. It is really wonderful. Uh, there's so many things that our kids are doing. Uh, our teachers are doing an exceptional job of making sure that they highlight the wonderful things that the kids are doing, as well as administrators and supervisors and things like that, getting all of the word out so that we see our kids. We celebrate all of the things that they are doing. Um, last week I had a great deal of joy. Uh, Dr. Marr and I went across the school system to visit our finalists for the Teacher of the Year and finalists for the Education Support Professional of the Year at, uh, multiple sites throughout the school system, and it was great. We got to see food service workers and administrative assistants and building service workers and, uh, you know, several food service workers, as well as incredible teachers, and interrupted what they were doing. We got to jump in and be the face behind the, you know, on their Zoom screen as they were working with kids. It, it was really, it was a, it was a great, it was a great week, um, and it, it's just reinforced the wonderful people we have working for our kids. Um, data-wise, uh, we have seen, we were as low as 74 new cases across the entire county of St. Mary's. Um, we jumped up a little bit to 110 last week. Uh, looks like that's, we, we might be kind of plateauing there. Uh, and that seems to be the trend across the state and a large part of the nation where we see, we've gotten down to a kind of point and we're just kind of riding along there. For the county, but what about the school system? So, we've had over 13,000 kids in classrooms and 2,300 employees everywhere from buses and cafeterias and hallways and class, wherever. Um, last week, the first week, we had four students test positive. The second week, we had three students test positive. Last week, we didn't have any students test positive who were attending in person. We did have people who were staying home, who were virtual, who tested positive. Interesting there. Um, and, uh, staff, we've been very good with staff as far as testing positive for the last three weeks. Um, when we went to last month before we had kids back, we actually had more instances of staff testing positive. It's very, uh, there was a great article out from the, I believe it's the, was the Times, talking about the fact that when they look at all of the data, there is a greater chance for a high school student to be, to test positive who wasn't hybrid. The ones who were staying home, because they aren't really necessarily staying home. The best environment you can be in is a, uh, St. Mary's County Public Schools. It's, we're not seeing a great deal of transmission going on there. So, we'll continue to monitor this. We'll continue to make this available to everybody, um, and the, the data's really good. So I just can't say enough about, you know, you referenced the, the coaches and the players and the parents, um, as well echo across all the school systems, to, to have this many kids in, in-person learning and not have something happen is really quite a testament to the work that they're doing. So we are, look at us. Oh my gosh, we're at the end of March. Um, when we first presented March and said we were going to go into Phase 3 and we're going to bring back all of these kids, um, I will tell you, uh, stress level's been kind of high every single day. So every single day at the end of the day, uh, check mark. All right, check mark, check mark, check mark. And we are all the way to the end of March, and we are check marking today, the 24th. That gives us the 25th tomorrow, the last, um, uh, hybrid day for the month of March. Uh, the 26th is a, is a asynchronous virtual day, um, and then, oh, spring break. So we have made it, a year later, to spring break. Um, we will have, uh, two-hour dismissal, dismissal next week. Uh, 29th, 30th, 31st is spring break. Uh, no school for students in 10, 11 month. Uh, the first is, uh, no student, no school, whatever, for kids. Uh, the second and the fifth is everybody's closed, everybody's out. Um, please, if there are teachers watching this or support staff, um, please enjoy your time. Please, uh, take the time to rejuvenate yourself, be safe as always, but, um, it's well deserved. It's well earned. Uh, you definitely need a, a vacation. Um, when we come back from spring break, that is the end of the third marking period. That Friday, April 9th, ends the third marking period. The next Friday is a two-hour early dismissal. That won't make necessarily a great deal of difference, um, and the 20th is the report card distribution. So the third marking period is ending, and we are going into the fourth marking period. So there's been a lot of conversations about what the fourth marking period might look like, and a lot of those conversations have come about because of what the CDC released last Friday, March 19th. And a lot of people have been talking about what the CDC released, and perhaps those people haven't actually gone to the CDC site and read what is actually there. Um, this is a great time where doing your own homework, um, helps. So I know everybody has an opinion, and everybody has a great deal of passion about what should happen next, but we have to, within the school system, go with what's actually, um, known. So we go to, directly to the CDC site. So the CDC, uh, last Friday presented what we were, had been hoping for, for quite a while, the movement away from six feet of social distancing when both people are wearing a mask at the elementary level. At the elementary level, they said three feet. So they first said everybody should continue to wear a mask, um, except when eating. Three feet of social distancing in elementary classrooms. That's really important. That means that we can start bringing more elementary-aged children back into the building because obviously they fit. When you take six feet of distance realistically in a classroom, really limits what you're able to do. But the other part of it is, six-foot social distancing remains the recommended guideline for secondary schools in a non-cohort setting. Elementary school is three feet of distancing because a classroom comes in and they, for the most part, stay in the same room all day long. They don't move from room to room to room. At the middle school and at the high school, we have, we did not cohort students. Kids come in and they follow a regular schedule, as they always would. They have a multi-period day where they go from one classroom to the next classroom to the next classroom. So if you were to go to any one of our middle schools or high schools, you will see kids moving and transitioning throughout the day. Um, where cafeterias where kids are eating, they did not relax the six-foot rule. If you take off your mask to eat, you should be six feet apart. In common areas, auditoriums and, uh, the larger gymnasiums, it's still six feet of distance. Um, they haven't changed it. So we are going to continue to tell them that all the evidence says that we can shrink those spaces, but as of right now, the CDC guidelines, they have not backed off of those. Uh, they also maintain the six-foot of distance between adults, adult to adult. So if I'm wearing a mask and you're wearing a mask, the CDC still says we should be six feet apart. That's also a challenge. Um, and the six feet of distance between adults and students. So teachers are not supposed to get within six feet of students. So there's still a lot to work out. The CDC is definitely moving in the right direction, and it's aligning its recommendations with what we actually see, but people who actually have kids in buildings. Um, but it's, it's an evolution. It continues. Uh, the one thing that they did not modify, the CDC did not modify close contacts for those not vaccinated. So for all of our children, they still have the same, uh, close contact rule, which means that even if I'm wearing a mask and you're wearing a mask, if we are within six feet of each other for 15 minutes in a 24-hour period, and one of us tests positive, the other is supposed to quarantine for 10 days. Um, imagine the cascading challenge of that if you have one child moving from three classrooms or four classrooms or five classrooms all day, and there are 20 children in a classroom, and you get the idea of where that's still a challenge. So while the CDC, good news, helps us, we are going to take that into account, and we're going to do the most that we can possibly do, which means that for the fourth quarter, starting April 12th, 2002, or 2021, we're going to create Phase 3B, we'll call it, 3B. And 3B means that we're going to create another co-horted group of kids. We're going to call them Group AB. So we have Group A, we have Group B, and now we're going to have Group AB. And Group AB will be kids, it will be students who will be invited to come back to school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And we're looking at the, those different particular cohorts. First, we're saying any student who has an active, uh, individualized education plan, special education student, they will be eligible to come back to school all four days. If a student is an English language learner student, they can come back all four days. If a student is a homeless student, they can come back all four days. And if you are a student who is failing, currently failing a core content area course, you can come back four days as well. So each one of the schools, right now, they're tasked with reaching out to and identifying and talking with parents to say they have the option of coming back four days a week. We've looked at the numbers. We've examined classrooms. We have staff and students and teachers, staff and teachers and principals, all working out what that looks like so that it is a manageable number. Um, Group AB, that is the best we can do right now based on what the CDC has shared with us. So if we apply that, that means that we come back in April and we get through the last week of the marking period. Uh, Friday, or Monday is off, 6th, 7th, and 8th. Friday is the end of the marking period. Then 3B starts, uh, for the remainder of the month of April, three solid weeks. We get into May, four solid weeks of virtual learning with this Group AB. And as the CDC revises its guidance, as the Maryland Department of Health then looks to the CDC and revises its guidance, because the Maryland Department of Health has not revised guidance or provided anything new to any of the school systems since the update. So we're still under the exact same guidance that we had back in February from the Maryland Department of Health. So we work through May, and I have to tell you that as a school system in the month of May, our emphasis is going to be on continuing to do the most we possibly can for kids, trying to have kids as engaged as possible in recover, and really paying the, a great deal of attention to our seniors. Because our seniors are going to be leaving us at the end of the year. They have had the most challenging year one could ever imagine, and on top of that, a junior year that got abbreviated. So we are going to be looking at what we can do for our seniors. First of all, making sure that all of them meet the criteria to be able to graduate with their peers. So if they're in a CTE program, we're going to make sure that they're meeting industry standards, that they're taking all the technical skills attainment that they need to so they can get whatever credential is associated with it. We're going to be really focusing on them, and the Forest Center and the teachers at the Forest Center have been amazing. The kids at the Forest Center have been amazing, um, to make sure that they're really utilizing the time available to the greatest benefit for all. Um, I will tell you that right now, uh, Great Mills High School has an approved prom plan. Leonardtown High School has an approved prom plan, and Chopticon High School has a plan that was approved at the school, presented to the deputy superintendent, and has been sent to the health department officer to go and review to make sure that, but I have every confidence that they'll have an approved plan. So one thing we know that we can look forward to is that in the month of May, there will be proms for our current seniors. And then we'll get into June, and June will come. We will get to June. And in June, the first week of June, we are going to have commencement exercises for our seniors. I can't tell you exactly what they will be, but I can tell you that seniors at Great, at Chopticon High School will graduate on Wednesday, June 2nd. Seniors at Leonardtown High School will graduate on, uh, Thursday, June 3rd. And Great Mills High School seniors will graduate on Friday, uh, June 4th. We will do the very most that we possibly can, given whatever opportunities we have. As of right now, using the current rules, we would have to take each graduating class and break it into smaller little cohorts, and then have multiple graduation sessions throughout the day inviting in parents. All of the superintendents have written a letter to the governor saying, "Governor Hogan, could you please, if we're looking one way and it's looking like this is going to be something, can you please tell us ahead of time that there'll be special dispensation so that we can bring in thousand, 2,000 people to participate in a commencement to graduate, to, we're, uh, celebrate and recognize, um, our seniors?" And we have every hope. Uh, if, we were just joking before we started. Um, Preakness looks like it's going to move forward, and there's going to be 10,000 people who can, uh, you know, can, uh, can attend Preakness, so maybe we'll just take all the seniors, line them up, bring everybody in, and just have them do a couple of quick laps and call it graduation. So, um, that's going to be June, the last day for, head start in pre-K is the 16th. The last day for students, and it's a, it's an abbreviated day, an early release day, is Thursday, June 17th. And the last day for all teachers is going to be June 23rd. So, we will get there. We have gotten through March. April and, and May will happen quickly. There's so many things going on, and we're, there's great trend data, and we are in with our kids, and it's great. Uh, June is going to be an opportunity to really finish strong and celebrate the accomplishment of our children and send off the class of 2021 like no other class has ever been sent off. And then, uh, for all of you who have been struggling, for all of you who might not be as engaged as we need you to be engaged, for all of you who are academically a little bit behind, uh, summer school recovery options are going to start in July, July 6th, and they're going to run all the way through August 12th. We got six straight weeks of recovery option for students. So anybody who failed the course is going to be able to attend, is going to be going to summer school. Um, uh, we are also looking at, um, summer camps. We're also looking at enrichment. We're looking at springboard things. So even if your child didn't necessarily receive a, uh, underperforming mark, you just feel as though they want to have an opportunity for, uh, some continued work over the summer. We're going to have opportunities for all of that. Um, as soon as we close the third marking period, staff at each one of the schools is going to be reaching out to each one of you directly. So...
That will be at all grade levels.
That'll be at all grade levels. Yeah, summer school isn't going to be just for high school. Summer school's for everybody, um, and, and multiple sites, and with transportation and food, uh, we really are looking at basically a year-round school model. And for all of you teachers, your last day is the, is the 23rd, but hey, don't worry. You can come right back, um, roll right into the next week, and we've got great PD and professional, and then we can have you teaching all summer long. So boy, there's a great opportunity for all the teachers. Um, if you are in middle school or you are in high school, and you're like, "I do not want to go to summer school", uh, then take advantage of the time that you have. Uh, right now, you should be working with your teachers on your grade and how you can recover it. I know that middle and high school, they have turned on edgenuity, you know, modules all the way up to full marking periods worth of work. You could be working on all of that. Teachers are here to work with each one of you to recover your grade, to get back on bubble so that you don't necessarily have to go to summer school. And parents, if your child is not attending school in person, if they are attending school virtually, and you anticipate them going back to school regular, regularly in the 2021, 2022 school year, and they're struggling, they really need to be back in school. The one thing that we're seeing is that kids that were really behind, once we got them into school for, just in the month of March, we're seeing a lot of recovery, a lot of re-engagement, and a lot of making up for missed time. So i- in a perfect world, I'd like to see 100% of our kids back in, in hybrid learning for the remainder of the school year and move away from the virtual. Um, but again, it's a decision that you as parents have to make with your children. Um, but this will end, and we will be coming back, because next year, the 2021, 2022 school year, we're not planning this again. We're not, we're not doing this again. We're not doing a hybrid, you're only here two days, and then you do some asynchronous, and you do, you zoom into a class, and we don't see your face for months. We're not doing it. For the 2021, 2022 school year, we're going to be normal. We're going to be normal, which means that there's going to be 65 kids on a bus. That means there's going to be 25 kids in a classroom. That means there's going to be a couple hundred kids in lunchrooms. There's a great probability that we're going to continue to wash our hands and sanitize and wear our masks and social distance when we can, but we're going to have a regular school year. Um, and the reason why we're going to have a regular school year is because I will never ask of a St. Mary's County teacher what has been asked of a St. Mary's County teacher this year. Um, I know everybody has opinions about what have you, but what we, what teachers are doing right now in hybrid. They have 30 kids who are assigned to them in a class, and they have 10 on one day, 10 on the other, 10 virtually. They're, have kids in front of them, and they're trying to work with them, and they have a mask, and the kids have a mask, and they're trying to be social distance, and they're actually running a camera and another camera, and they've got a smart board, and they're going around, and they're doing an experiment, and they've got, it is, it is unbelievable what they have been able to do, especially when you consider that this time last year, we didn't have any of this technology. We certainly didn't have the platform in place. They, what we've asked them to do and what they have done is incredible, and we're not doing it next year. So everybody needs to have that in their head. We'll be talking about what a virtual option might look like when we get more information from the Maryland State Department of Education on what is an approved virtual education for next year, and we don't know, because they haven't told us. Um, but next year is going to be normal. So, uh, we need to get kids back in school. So if your kid, if, if your child isn't in school... So if your kid, if your child isn't in school, they're going to be really, if they don't come back for the fourth marking period, they're going to so struggle at the beginning of next year, when they're just, oh, like, that's the one thing. It, it takes, there's a great deal of acclamation to bringing them back into their routines and stuff like that. And what I can tell you right now is, what our staff has been doing for the month of March, we're keeping them as safe as possible. Safer certainly than what your, what your child is out in the community. They're safer in schools than out. Staff is safer in schools than outside of schools. So that's great. So that's where we are for the fourth marking period. And I would normally end my presentation right now, but I'm not going to, because I want to talk a little bit about, well, before we do that, there's going to be, there's a lot of stuff that, to remember. So we are going to do a phone out tomorrow. The phone out is going to be followed with a letter. The letter's going to have links to everything that we're doing, so you can go through and you can watch this video if you aren't watching this video. And we're going to ask, we have another survey that's coming out, so you can tell us what your, what your plan is for the fourth marking period, and if you would be interested in four days a week, even if you don't fall into one of those cohorts, if you are interested in four days a week at the elementary level, we'd like to have that data so that we might be able to, we might, who knows what we might be able to accommodate. Each school is going to be, each classroom is different, each school is going to be different, but we do want to get kids back as much as we can in front of and working with, directly with kids. So there'll be a phone out and a letter and a survey that'll go out tomorrow. But while I have you here, I'd like to talk a little bit about the St. Mary's County budget and the budget request that went to our county commissioners. If you remember, we, we, we built ours ahead of time. We were the, we got it over to them first. We were one of the first people to present. And so at the, when you break it all down to all of this stuff, it's a quarter billion dollar budget, but at its essence, it's, it's three forms that go over to the county commissioners for their consideration. It's an essential cost change form. So we sent over one essential cost change form that asked for $2 million worth of non-recurring one-time funds for technology. They said, no, that one's gone. We sent over an essential cost change requesting $500,000 approximately for bus drivers to enhance compensation after they requested when they came before us. To talk about that yesterday, they said, no, that's gone. The last one is an essential cost change that deals with paying our teachers what they have earned, what they have negotiated. We negotiated a four-year plan with them. Each year, they get a, they get a step along a progression. And because our teachers are paid less than they are in Charles County, and Calvert County, and Prince George's County, and Howard County, and Baltimore County, and Baltimore City, the only places that are paid about the same as us are places on the eastern shore and western Maryland. So when they negotiated the agreement, there is a step each year, and there is a 1.75 salary scale adjustment for 2022. It's then 2% for the following two years after that. It's also called a COLA. A COLA is a cost of living adjustment, but that's, a COLA is a salary scale adjustment. It's a, it's a percent that's increased for everybody. And you'll know that, and it gets confusing, but a lot of times, people will say, you know, well, there's no, you don't need a COLA because the inflation rate isn't that high. Well, a 1.75 COLA is extremely modest, but if you look at it in terms of, it's a salary scale adjustment so that we would bring up our rate of pay that would be commensurate with our neighbors. So to do that, to earn that, what we have negotiated is, it's going to cost about $5.9 million. Now, the ECC, it's broken out into the component pieces. The first is that there's a health insurance increase, because health insurance goes up every single year. We are personally, we, we insure ourselves, we're self-insured. So $1.6 million to cover anticipated health insurance claims. And that's a 5%, that's an assumed 5% increase over the previous year. And let me assure you, that's well below market. The next is workers' comp and property insurance premiums. That's, that's just the cost of doing business. We need $200,000 to do that. The step, the COLA, according to negotiations, is $4.5 million for all of our employees, the, the support staff, building service workers, administrative assistants, secretaries, counselors, teachers, all the way up to administrators. That's all $4.5 million. There's also a Social Security Medicare increase of $2.293, $293,000. And then, instead of just adding that up, we take a look at our lapsed salary savings as well as the variances due to attrition with staff that's going out at the very top end and being replaced by student staff that's coming in. So we back out $725,000 as a historical trend number, gets us to $5.9 million. So our request to honor the negotiated agreement and to pay for healthcare is $5.9 million over to the county commissioners. They never, we've, we're not even close to that number. They have told us, you, they will, we will receive, right now, they've moved over $2.6 million of new funds that they will allocate to the school system, which basically covers just a merit increase. It doesn't cover the negotiate, it doesn't cover the COLA, and it doesn't cover health insurance, workers' comp, Social Security, it doesn't include anything else. It's just that money. We are still $3.2 million shy of what we would need to honor the negotiated agreement for all those employees that we just saw Twitter early on that had done, all the work that they have done on behalf of our kids. We really thought it was a modest increase to ask for, especially since in December, they presented that they have over $7 million worth of unrealized revenue in this current year. In the 2021 fiscal year, they originally budgeted $107.9 million is what they anticipated to come in for income tax revenue. That's what they said. And so they had a budget of $248 million. Well, in 20, in December, they said, whoa, we're getting money coming in, we're actually going to get more property tax, substantially more income tax. The rest, they didn't modify, but I don't know why it went down. So they believe it's going to have $7.3 million. So we assumed, look, you, you already have the money for what we're requesting in the current operating budget. So we thought we were in great shape. We need to follow the budget work sessions, the county commissioners. They're very long. I think they did their final budget work session yesterday before they do all the reconciliation to then get it all finished and approved, and then goes to budget hearing. You can see this, it's up on YouTube if you want to go to see it for the county commissioners. It's, it's three hours and 23 minutes just for the last one. They have a budget work session agenda that rides along on top. There's a budget package that's 80, for this one, it's 84 pages, but some of them are substantially larger. There's a lot of information, they cover a lot of information. As I said several times to the commissioners directly, I wouldn't want to be them. There's a lot of information, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made about, about how the county moves forward with regard to funding and programs and services that are provided to constituents. So I'm not going to review 84 pages. They didn't review 84 pages directly. I'm going to highlight a couple that kind of apply back to us. The first is that the only finished and known revenue is 2019, the tax year 2019. And from the comp control, you can get a whole bunch of information to know where that money came from, who made the money, how much they paid, where it all was. And this was the last year that our local tax was only 3%. In 2020, it went up to 3.17%. So what's really great about this sheet is it shows that there were, there were 8,825 filed returns out of the 100 and some thousand people who live in St. Mary's County, only, I'm sorry, there were 50, I'm sorry, there were 51,000 returns. Of those 51,000 returns, 8,800 paid no taxes. And then all of these, you can see, this is how much people made, this is how many returns there were, what the overall net income was for that group, net state, and then how much the county received for each one of these. It's really interesting to see that the county itself receives about 80% of its income tax revenue from people who make more than $80,000, and that's about 1/3 of all taxpayers. So when we talk about revenue and projecting revenue, and you, we're talking about a pandemic, and who's being impacted by a pandemic, you should consider those people being impacted, and then take a look at how much revenue they're generating through income tax to kind of figure this all out. But 80% of the revenue that we realize comes from 1/3 of the population, and that population is making more than $80,000 a year, some substantially more. And this was not a group that was as heavily impacted by COVID as perhaps people who are hourly wage earners and things such as that, who absolutely lost their jobs. These were a lot of people who were allowed to telework. So the second sheet that was probably jumped out, for some people jumped out for me, was the actual, the known tax year. So in 17, we made $84 million, and then in 18, we made $93 million. It was a 10% increase. And from 18, we made 93, to 19, we made 99, it was a 7% increase. So we're seeing large increases year over year, and that's before we put in the tax raise that went from 3% to 3.17%. And that's 3.17% of the very large amount of money that's coming into people who work in St. Mary's County. So the question is, how are we doing in 2020? We would not, we want to know how we're doing this year and see where 2020 returns are. So this was also, so these were, these are not my sheets, these are their sheets. This sheet was shared, and we haven't seen this, I think, presented publicly, but this shows the distributions by month each year. So this year, St. Mary's County has received tax distributions in September, October, November, nothing for December, January, and February. And one of the commissioners had asked in the previous meeting, how much over last year are we seeing so far? Like, what's the percent increase? Is it up? Is it down? What is it? So overall, you've got a per payment, and you've got a cumulative percent. So right now, as of the February disbursement, which was $32 million over the 25 the year before, they're cumulatively 24% higher than last year. So we know that the finalized one was 10%, one was 7%, and this year, we, realizing that we raised taxes and all of that, it's 24% so far this year. Wow, seems like we're doing great. But as you can see, so at this point, I had to stop using their forms because I wanted to put some numbers in to see what that looked like. So I made an Excel spreadsheet. So these are their exact same numbers, and this is a screenshot from an Excel spreadsheet. So here's where we are so far this year. $32 million the last payment, 24% over where we were last year. I draw one's attention to the bottom for 19, fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20. So for fiscal year 19, they had an approved budget of $93 million, because they said it would grow at 3.5% from the previous year. It actually came in at $97 million. So at the end of the year, they had $3.5 million worth of unrealized, unrecognized, unanticipated revenue that then went to fund balance. In 2020, last year's budget, we went through, they said, again, we're only, we're going to grow at 4%, and they looked at all the numbers, they built a budget with $101 million worth of revenue anticipated. It actually came in at $107 million worth of revenue. So there were $6 million worth of money in that year that was anticipated, that wasn't spent, that came in and went right to fund balance. So here we are in 2021, and we are 24% above where we were last year. And they anticipated a 3.5% increase as opposed to the 24%. And they said that this year, we would only receive $107 million, $107.9 million worth of income tax revenue in this year. And they know that's not, they know that that's obviously blown by the wayside because we're actually receiving revenue substantially higher than that, at 24%. So we know it's not $107 million that they're going to get this year in revenue. In December, they raised it to $115 million. At the last budget session, they raised it to $116 million, which would be an 8%, 8.8% increase over the previous year. And this looks like then they're building toward a, a recognized fund balance, where it'll be about $8.8 million if, if their projection holds true. Now, John O'Connor, Commissioner O'Connor, who was kind of driving a lot of this conversation, said, well, what happens if for the remainder of 2021, the, what comes in is the same as the 2020? So what happens if there's no growth between the March 2020 and the March 20, and we just transpose last year's numbers right over to 2021? Does that equal $116 million? Well, I, I filled it in, and it doesn't. So if, if there's no growth for the remainder of this year, so if March comes in exactly as last year, and May is exact, and June is exact, and July is exact, and August is exact, and the first year is 23% higher, but we don't understand why, we will see $121 million in revenue this year, will have a growth of 13% over the previous year, and they will have $13 million worth of income tax revenue that they didn't build into the budget, that wasn't anticipated, that'll go directly to fund balance. This is just income tax. Property tax is also coming in higher, and all the rest with all the funds back and forth, we don't know where that's going to be, but this is at least $13 million. So that was the conversation yesterday. This is, these aren't my words, you have to go watch it, it's, it's a three and a half hour show, budget work session. But this is, this was the request from John O'Connor to have it flushed out. Ms. Cudmore flushed it out, and she said about $13 million then in this year's budget. Why that's important is because the budget that we're building now, the 2022 budget, is projecting how much income is going to come in. And at this last budget work session, they did decide to go from the original 3% to 3.5%. So their revenue projection for income now has gone up to $120.6 million. And we appreciate the fact that they're not projecting 3%, that they moved it up to 3.5%. But even if you really take 3.5% and you apply it to the known numbers of the, as they've come in so far, and the anticipated flat growth for the remainder of the year, you don't end up with $120 million, you end up with $125 million. So as they're building the budget right now, they're probably already going to end up with a $5 million windfall in December of 2022. The greater challenge one needs to ask is when you have increases over the previous year, a six-year average of 5.5% and 7% one year, and 10% one year, and probably 13, 10 to 13% this year, why would you possibly say 3.5%? Why would you possibly say that? And so that's, that's where we are. Why does that all matter? That's not my job, that's not, that's, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how they're forecasting, what their revenue is going to be, because they're, they want to build a balanced budget. But for our part, over on this side of the street, we asked for $5.9 million to honor our negotiated agreement, to pay our people what we promised our people and what they've earned, and to cover our health insurance costs. We're still $3.2 million shy of being able to do that. We look forward to a lot more conversations, hopefully, as they go back and forth. We hope that the, Mr. Eric Colvin as well as John O'Connor, they were both really kind of pushing this at the very end, how we can get them to more, even if they went to 4%. They'd have enough money within their budget right now to honor our negotiated agreement, to give the steps and calls, do a whole bunch of things. So we don't know where the 3.5% came in, but we haven't seen a number like that for the last, I mean, it's been quite a while. So while I had everybody here, I definitely wanted to touch upon that. It's been great. We're doing well in St. Mary's County. The, the schools are great, the kids are back. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Oh, Jim?
Dr. Smith, could you give us an indication of how well the students have been doing during COVID? I'm reading from adjoining counties and nationally that children are failing at a much higher rate during virtual learning as opposed to in-house learning. Could you, could you share with us the results that we've had doing the hybrid learning in the last three, four months?
Well, what I, at the end of the second marking period, we did share back how the kids did for the first semester, and we talked about the fact that we were seeing almost three times the amount of failure that we would normally see in a year. three times the amount of failure that we would normally see in a year, and a lot of the mitigating strategies that we were implementing to try to help kids get back in shape. We did present last week, our last time we got together, about all the things that we were doing to work with kids. At the end of the third marking period, we will do our analysis as we did at the end of the second and the first, and I can provide that back to you. But it's a, it is absolutely a commonly known fact that more children are failing in virtual than they are in person, as much as three times as many, and that's why it's so important to get our kids back into in-person instruction. Since we've been back in hybrid for the month of March, we've definitely seen kids make exceptional progress, and so I'm looking forward to the end of the third marking period and the grades that are generated, so we can see how much, how much we've, how much distance we've made up.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, I've, I understand the issues. What I'm learning, is I've kind of been a strong advocate of virtual learning, and I'm especially seeing the issues of younger, the younger students, they need that, that structure that you find in the classroom. And I want to compliment the school system, they've done a great job, and I'm very encouraged that for next year, we're going to, it'll be business as usual. So, I, I just, my comment is that, as I said, that I was surprised that there, there was a, such a high failure rate with kids in virtual learning. I hope that, as I said, that we'll be back to normal next year.
Okay. All right. If you would like, okay, so, next we have Todd Burrows, who has been patiently waiting to present the art gallery for the second marking period.
All right, hold on, let me find.
Somewhere.
Whoops.
Oh, that's a nice art gallery.
There you go.
Our Twitter feed.
Oh, there's Mr. Burrows. Mr. Burrows has joined us. Let me screen share then our superintendent's art gallery. And let me...
There we go. I was queuing up the Jeopardy theme song there.
The new one or the one that Sting did? Which one?
Oh, no.
Yeah, right. All right. Well, good evening, board members. Before we begin, I would like to congratulate our AVPA students and staff for their wonderful capstone performances last night. They did a wonderful job. I know CHS retweeted out the event, so if you get an opportunity, please check it out, it was, it was incredible. So, all right. It is great to be back with all of you to recognize some of our outstanding young artists here in St. Mary's County. Tonight, we are recognizing student artwork that appeared in this year's second quarter superintendent's art gallery. For the gallery, each quarter, student artwork is selected to be displayed in the Board of Education meeting room and in the hallway leading to Dr. Smith's office. As I had mentioned during previous recognitions, the arts and engagement in the creative process provide our students with a safe, emotional outlet that allows them to express and celebrate who they are. As I've also said many times, we are so incredibly fortunate that Dr. Smith and our Board of Education members are strong advocates for our arts programs. Through your support, we were able to continue our programs during a school year full of unknowns. So, traditionally, for this recognition, we'd all be gathered in the boardroom, students would be called up to receive a certificate, and then they would take their artwork home at the conclusion. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that quite yet, but hopefully soon. However, we are able to recognize our artists tonight, and my office will soon be in touch with participants for information regarding the pickup of their certificates and artwork. So, without further ado, we'd like to recognize the following students. From Linnetown High School, with the piece Positive and Negative Space Art, Brienne From Esperanza Middle School, with the piece Pear, Elena Fitzsimmons. From Green Holly Elementary School, with the piece Winter Scene, Isabella Holmes. From Lexington Park Elementary School, with the piece Maryland Day Flag, Anna Lisa. From Oakville Elementary School, with the piece Shaded Joy, Camilla Moore. From Leonardtown Middle School, with the piece Funky Master Painting, Sharif Thomas. And from the Chesapeake Public Charter School, with the piece Friends, Henry Yietman. So, great job, students, wonderful artwork. Now, before we conclude, as Ms. Washington talked about earlier, I would like to promote our Youth Art Month virtual gallery. The virtual art gallery has artwork from students all across the system, and so far, the reviews have been tremendously positive. So, look for that soon, it'll be going out across all of our social media platforms. So, thanks, everyone.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. I can't say enough for our incredibly creative teachers who just, kids keep making art, and will figure out ways to performance art, and, and you did a fantastic job, thank you very much for the, for participating on the soundbites, and it really is, it's, it's all very good stuff. So, thank you very much, Mr. Burrows. And thank you very much to our artists for sharing your incredible work with us, they have absolutely brightened spaces that needed the brightening.
Definitely. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay. No public hearing, can any public comment? Okay. Then, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented today. It is the approval of minutes of March 10th, 2021. There are no administrative and supervisory appointments, and also, we have personnel teachers on the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. My roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, let's see, we do not have any action items, but we do have two information items. The first one is, I believe, somewhere is Ms. Della Hunt with Women's History Month and Irish American Heritage Month.
Hello. And I don't know why we're not...
Good evening. How is everyone?
You're good.
Doing well.
Good, thank you.
Great, great. It's great to see you all again, and it's an honor to connect in and celebrate Women's History and Irish American History Month. The month of March is set aside to acknowledge and celebrate the achievement of women and Irish Americans throughout history, and March is designated as Women's History Month and Irish American Heritage. Next slide. And we have, in 2021, Women's History Month, the theme is Valiant Women of the Vote, honoring the brave women who fought to win suffrage rights for women, and for the women who continue to fight for the voting rights of others. And our county commissioners actually have announced a proclamation that the month of March 2021 is Women's History Month, and called upon all of our student, all of our citizens, pardon me, of St. Mary's County to observe this month through appropriate ceremonies and activities such as this, to remember the important contributions of women throughout the year. So, in celebrating and recognizing St. Mary's County women, we're highlighting women in history, as well as acknowledging champions for their everyday contributions to students and families of our county. And so, Letty Marshall Dent, Ms. Letty, was the first female county-level superintendent of schools in Maryland, serving St. Mary's County for 30 years, from 1928 to 1957. And during the entirety of her tenure, she was the only female superintendent in Maryland. And under her leadership and that of Dr. Robert E. King Jr., she led in the significant transition of the integration of schools as well. And we have our wonderful Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School that is named for her. And celebrating heroes, we all know who this wonderful and amazing woman is. She is an amazing woman with one of the toughest jobs. Dr. Mina Brewster. Dr. Brewster is the St. Mary's County Health Officer, and she directs the St. Mary's County Health Department, and provides medical guidance and public health decision-making among her many jobs. Dr. Brewster is the person in charge of testing sites, and staffing, and rollout, and getting the word out about the COVID-19 vaccinations. And as our county health officer, she has led the St. Mary's County Health Department as an instrumental partner with St. Mary's County Public Schools and St. Mary's County Sheriff's Department's Equity Task Force, focusing on educating and the community, and keeping the public aware of public health education and safety issues and, issues and emergencies, especially valuing the diversity in our county and working towards achieving health equity through important initiatives and programs like our local air quality monitoring network, our school-based health centers, and addressing childhood trauma. So, thank you, Dr. Brewster, for all you have done and continue to do to help keep our students safe and our families safe as well. And I'm sure you recognize these wonderful, amazing, phenomenal women of our Board of Education. Ms. Karen Bailey, Mrs. Karen Bailey, Chairman, Mrs. Kathy Allen, Vice Chairman, Mrs. Mary Washington, Mrs. Rita Weaver, and Ms. Nagina Ori. Thank you so much for your service, your hard work, and your support of our students and staff and families in our communities every day. We want to pay tribute to you. And, of course, no celebration for women in this county would be complete without celebrating our dynamic women in leadership at St. Mary's County Public Schools. Dr. Maureen Montgomery, Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Kelly Hall, Chief of Equity Engagement and Early Access, Mrs. Tammy McCord, Assistant Superintendent of Fiscal Services and Human Resources, and Sue Javardis, Chief of Counsel. Thank you to these amazing women for these, their dedication, their devotion and advocacy to ensuring our students and staff and families are supported and that their voices are amplified. And to quote Dolly Parton, "If your actions create a legacy that inspires others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, then you are an excellent leader." So, I want to thank all of our excellent leaders of STEM CPS. Next, I do want to highlight just one of the many celebrations of women's history, and this is a women in history, or herstory, actually, display from Ms. Kirsten Burton's eighth-grade STEM class at Spring Ridge Middle School. And of course, March is Irish American Heritage Month, and during this month, we have an opportunity to teach our students about the important heritage of Irish Americans and the many contributions to the growth and development of our country. And it is so important to, that we continue to provide resources and support to our staff, our students, and families where it concerns educational equity, diversity, inclusion, and achievement. And we have this information available on our website, our Equity Corner for staff, Equity Matters for staff and our students and families, and our SMCPS Educational Equity Twitter page. So, we celebrate, in closing, women's history and Irish American heritage and the valuable contributions made for our country, our county, our state, a history that allows us to acknowledge our past, motivate our present, and inspire our future. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, appreciate it.
And thank, and thank you, Ms. Della Hunt, for, for your incredible, your leadership and participation and vision and partnering that you do, and also, please extend that to Dr. Wathauer as well, who has been the Education Chair for the NAACP, I believe, since she retired from St., even before perhaps she retired from St. Mary's County Public Schools, after years and years and years of incredible leadership and dedication to our kids. So, wonderful, wonderful, and I am definitely blessed to work with some of the most incredible leaders, I think, around. I am a lucky person.
Are you going to stick around for the 30 years, like Letty Marshall Dent?
No, absolutely, absolutely not. She was definitely somebody who had much more stamina than I.
All right.
Thank you.
No, off Scott's bucket list. All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone have anything else?
We still have February.
Oh, oh, sorry, Tammy. Oh, my God. My most, my, my most favorite piece.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know...
Sorry.
The money lady for guests...
Well, normally, we do it at the, we do it at the prior board meetings, so it's never usually the last one.
We're one off.
So, we're delayed two weeks. Sorry, Tammy.
Yep.
Not a problem.
After I just saw your picture, too.
Right.
Scott took up all the money talk with his update.
Oh, my gosh. And, and further, and just, so, everybody realizes, Scott doesn't know anything whatsoever. Everything that comes out of my mouth has to be, has to be...
embedded.
Poor Tammy has to spend, Ms. McCord has to spend so much time explaining everything to me again and again, and again, and again, and again, and she's exceptionally, exceptionally patient. Perhaps she's one of our, one of our best educators, I think, because she definitely is working with one of our most difficult students.
I think Scott is going to surpass me in the understanding of the income tax of St. Mary's County very, very quickly.
Scott has to go to summer school.
Yes. I'll be there.
Okay. So, before you is the financial report for the month of February, and we have received $165.1 million year-to-date, and as compared to budget, we have a balance currently of $66.4 million. Year-to-date, we have received 71.32%. It continues to be a concern about our interest income, so that is noted from prior months. All other categories or accounts are in alignment as expected. On the expenditures side, we have encumbrances outstanding of $99.9 million year-to-date in expenses, total of $216.5 million, and a current available balance of $15 million. We've expended and/or encumbered 93.5% of our budget, and the two areas still noted as concern from prior months are the transfers for special education, those are the non-public education transfers, as well as the insurance under unemployment. Are there any questions?
I don't have anything, no.
Thank you all.
All right.
Okay. With that, does anyone have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. The next board meeting will be on Wednesday, April 14th. We will have everyone in the boardroom at that point in time, so we will set up additional desks for Mary and Jim on the sides, so we will not have the Zoom. Nagina, I don't know what your schedule looks like for that, for that day, so, you know, just let us know if you can attend in person or not, it's completely up to you. So, okay, so, with that, we are adjourned.